I would like to call to the order the Select Board meeting of January 22nd. We're going to executive session pursuant to Mass. Journal Law Chapter 30A, Section 21. The Board will discuss the following: Jay Perry, Mass. Journal Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, A1, discuss the physical condition of an employee; discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, and mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of our complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We will discuss the town administrator contract to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Also, Police Brotherhood Union, we will discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. And finally, we will talk about 718 Reed Road purchase to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. We will, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. We can vote, we need a vote.
We'll call as always.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we vote four zero to go into executive session. We hope to return as close to six thirty as possible. Thank you very much.
I want to reconvene our Select Board meeting of January 22, 2024. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you. We're starting our meeting here in room 304. This meeting is being recorded. We have four members present. Mr. Gracie unfortunately continues to be under the weather and will not be attending, so therefore our votes will be in unison and not by roll call. We signed the warrant and we are ready to go. First on the list is 630, close enough, aquaculture license renewal, license number 2018-01. Please step forward, introduce yourself and tell us a story.
You've got to open up the hearing.
Open this hearing?
It's an appointment, I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's all right.
Hello?
Speak right into the microphone.
Second, my name is Luke Sebastha and I'm requesting the renewal of my aquaculture license.
So why don't you just tell us, you know, when you started, a little background?
Okay.
Just so anybody who's watching, all the millions of people that are watching on TV.
Sure. I started the farm in 2019 upon graduating from the University of Rhode Island and I have been operating it ever since. We've had some years better than others, but I'm hoping to have a good one in the next coming years.
Where is it?
It's located in Buzzards Bay, just outside of Peyton Arum Harbor over near Nonquay Beach.
As the public record shows, there you gave us quite a history of the five year you had, you've had your ups and downs, but it was really well done and thank you for that presentation.
Of course.
And you've paid your price some years and some years, it was great, well, I guess it was never great, but.
Yep, we're sort of at the mercy of Mother Nature, so, and keeps it interesting, but we got to try to keep going.
She always wins.
She does, she does, we're just along for the ride.
I just wanted to mention that in your bio of going through this, the different things that you have done over the years and changing, changing the way that you're dropping the pots in or, and collecting them out, you've gotten a new boat to do that, the fact that the storms have damaged some of your materials, the fact that you want to continue this after I read all the kind of trials and tribulations, that's pretty impressive that you want to continue. I do, I am curious, how, like, over the winter, like, do you still go out 12 months a year or is there a period where you stop?
I was for the years when I had oysters, I was going out in December, January, especially once I got the word from the nature conservancy, I'm sure you've read about that, they sort of kept me waiting because they sort of promised me that quality doesn't necessarily matter since the oysters would be going to natural restoration, it's not for consumption. So they sort of kept me waiting for that winter thinking I'd be able to offload some product. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, but that is the plan, to do year-round sales. I've been thinking in the future of possibly doing cold storage on land, it's a very popular practice, so it's much easier to access the oysters because at the moment what I do is I sink them and the site's in about 20 to 30 feet of water depending on the tides and it makes it very difficult to raise an entire line of 15 oyster cages when it's freezing cold and luckily, as I mentioned in the write-up, I've sort of updated my boat to make it more doable for a single operator. This is my second boat and so my first one was a couple feet smaller and it didn't have the winch, so over the last couple of years I've installed a winch, which greatly helps, but it's still quite the task to go out and get oysters when the cages are sunk. So I've considered possibly doing cold storage on land, which is popular, you'll put them in a cold storage facility, there's a couple of them over in New Bedford, and you cover the oysters in seaweed so they maintain their moisture and it's much easier to access because you don't have to go out in the cold.
I like that idea.
Yeah, it's a possibility.
This sounds really dangerous, Luke.
Yeah.
I just want to say in reading it, but I commend you for wanting to do it and although the area off of Nonquay is less protected than the areas inside, I think you have a better ability to have that tidal flow.
Mm-hmm. That was part of it in the site selection too. When I was initially going for the grant, I ideally wanted to be inside of the breakwater, which is where the existing other oyster farm in Dartmouth is.
Yep.
But a big part of that was the tidal exchange and water quality with all the boats in the harbor as well. There's also not a lot of room in our harbor, as you guys know.
The last one was over at Ricketson's, that area?
Yep, yep.
I know there was one that had tried on the inner harbor, but that didn't work.
No, the water quality on the north side of the bridge, we can't grow there.
Yeah.
And so.
We were hoping that it would clean, you know, help to clean, but it's too much to start.
I believe right now the water quality is sort of, it depends, they close it down during rainstorms and then you can harvest shellfish when it's clean, but for an oyster farm, that's not really ideal, you want to be able to get your products when you need it, so.
And since I like to eat oysters, I certainly don't want them to be of that iffy.
Right.
So I'd love to support Luke.
A harbor master who's also a shellfish warden is an expert and he certainly gave you a strong recommendation to keep it going and of course, that's what we need to go by for our basis to make our decisions, so I commend you for that because he certainly is sticking by you as well.
Okay, yeah.
Anybody have any questions? We need to vote on this, Mr. McInnes?
Yeah, motion to renew the license 2018-01.
Second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none, 4-0, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, you did a great, great job.
Just a question, so how do I proceed with acquiring the new license?
Oh, you'll be contacted by our office.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
The price just went up, was it $10,000? The price just went up, was it $10,000?
Free oysters for the year.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting, I saw we kept you waiting.
I'm gonna have my oysters.
Okay. All set with that one? We're gonna move on next. The Recreation Center Building Committee appointments, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, so as you know, at the last meeting, the board approved the committee charge and we advertised for the at-large members from the community. We received a number of applicants, there are letters of interest. I think we received four and over the weekend, since the packet was uploaded, we've received another two that we can forward along to the board. In addition, the finance committee met to appoint a member and voted to not appoint a member of the finance committee, so the board can decide if they want to...
Not appoint?
Not appoint. So the board can decide if they want to not...
What was the reason behind that?
Against the project?
Gary can speak to that. Gary Carraway is the finance director.
Gary's taking one for the team over there.
Thank you, Gary Carraway, treasurer, collector. The finance committee met last week and not all members of the finance committee were there, there were three members absent. So they tabled it and did not make any recommendation to vote on whether or not they wanted to have someone as a representative. So the chairman was going to reach out to the other members to see whether or not they were interested in, I haven't heard anything back from him. So I think that as of now, they have not had anybody.
So it's not that they won't, they just didn't have the full collective?
Well, the members that were there, the members that were there did not feel that they wanted to have a representative on the committee. So they were giving the credit, giving the ability for the other three members that weren't there to speak on whether or not they wanted to become a member of the committee.
So a committee of this kind is pretty well established, that we represent these different committees in a building. And so far, the decision is that it sounds like they're pretty against the project, therefore why have a committee member? If I were them, I would want to have someone there to watch out what's going on.
My recommendation to them, the members that were at the meeting, was that even if you're, whether you're for or against it, I think it's prudent that you have somebody at the table that can speak on whether or not they feel that the recreation building is viable or feasible for the town.
Could we voice our opinion in that regard, back to the finance committee?
I think we just say we hope at the next meeting that they do find someone to join that committee.
We pass on that message?
Or out?
We don't need to vote them in like that, it's fancy, but we could pass...
Our next meeting will be February 15, so I plan on putting it back on the agenda to either, the a or n, whether or not they want to have somebody on the...
And our official message is that we prefer that you have someone there, whether you support the project or not.
Yeah, I will relay that to them.
Okay.
Definitely.
Is that all right?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Now regarding, we now have six...
Letters of interest.
Right. So what is our...
So prior to the meeting, I had included four and the plan was to ask, rather than having all the, we only need three, rather than having everybody in, in the board can, do they want to identify three or four that they want, that have come in to introduce themselves and the board can ask them questions? So the board can let me know or what I can do is send all six out at this point now and the board can reply back to me individually and I can determine the three or four that the board would like to see. That's, that's an option at the next meeting.
Some really qualified people.
So one option is to have all six here and let them speak, the other option is that we pick and ask those if...
I'd like to know who the other two are.
Right.
We only have four.
We just got them, yeah.
Yeah.
So why don't we wait till we get the other two?
We didn't have a closing date, right?
No, we didn't. The request for proposals are due Friday. We're trying to move the process along, so, you know, we're tying it in with the next meeting date with the board. And it's, you know, it can get, you know, delayed a little bit. The RFQs are due on Friday, but they don't need to be opened until the board's established.
We also have three other committees to, this board, Select Board, Park Board, and Capital Planning to be included. Have we heard from...
Not yet, no.
Capital, also, didn't we have ex officio or emergency management, right?
Yes.
Somebody from, I mean, that's only a, it's a small committee of, right?
One.
I guess he's coming.
Yes.
So do we think we'll know that by, we won't know the FinCom until at least the 15th, so do we put this off until February 5th or February 22nd?
Well, my first, the other is, what about the other three committees we haven't heard from, which is one of this board as well?
Well, we can ask them to, we could put this off until the, to the last meeting in February, because if we don't, if we have an answer from the FinCom that they don't want to do it, then I'd rather, you know, get five people, you know, five of the six. That's kind of bad to do it, but, you know, somebody's going to be left out, but...
You'd rather expand the at-large members, is what you're saying.
The more important issue is that FinCom should be represented.
It should be, but, you know, that's their decision, they're going to have to live with it.
I don't think we need to add another member because we need to...
No, 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 I'm not saying add another member, I'm saying, in other words, we have, we have...
Three of four now, you're gonna have...
We have three people that we have to add.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the three at large. So if FinCom doesn't, chooses not to have, then we can have four at large. Keep the committee number the same, but have four at large.
Different entities.
Yeah, I understand that the number is not that important as it is to having them there, but okay.
Well, that's up to them. They don't want to be there, that's up to them.
Do we have any interest from this board?
Yeah, I told you I wanted to do it.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. Is that all right? Do we need to vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson? Should we, can we do that now, before he changes his mind?
No, it's just, he's, he wants to do it, let him do it.
I think you need to take a vote.
We need to vote, yeah. Need a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to appoint Mr. Mickelson to the...
Stanley Mickelson?
Mr. Mickelson.
Okay.
To the Recreation Center Building Committee.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
You've got to respect your elders.
I want to hear from the public out here, anybody against it out there?
Look at them all.
Ask Kayla.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Shall we vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I hear none. Thank you, Mr. Mickelson.
You're welcome.
So we're going to contact the Park Board and the Capital Planning?
Yes.
And also, we'll have those other, and we won't make any decisions on the others until we read it, until the next meeting as well.
Correct. Then let's get the resume of those two other people.
Right. Okay.
What I'll do is I'll send the letters of interest and then as we get more, I'll make sure to put them in a packet for the fifth, so I'll leave this item on there for the fifth just to...
For the fifth, yeah.
For the fifth, yes.
Okay. We all set? Very good. Thank you all out there for your interest. Probably an indication, the interest in the facility itself.
Yeah, it's great.
I want to say you have been the, other than the Park Board, you've been the strongest advocate for the building, I would say that's, the public wants it. Okay. We, B has been taken care of, Mr. Mahawald is on the Veteran Advisory Board. So we're going to move on to C, which is a carnival event permit process approval.
Yes, so in the past, we've had some, you know, items come up along the way with carnival permits in town, there's a one-day license, but it was determined last year that carnivals really need their own one-day license. So Chad Deschamps, our system analyst here, configured a new carnival event permit and he'd like to kind of walk you through the process and the pages are in your packet, but he's going to walk through kind of the whole process.
Chad?
So, like you said, the pages are in your packet. The important part is the workflow portion. So previously, we'd use the one-day event license to capture the carnival, just because it doesn't really, it didn't really fit anywhere else. But after the issues that we had with the neighbors and everything last year, we decided that we should kind of expand the process a little bit. So the difference in this workflow versus the one day is we've added an abutters notification to this, so that they have the opportunity to voice their concerns prior to the event actually happening. The only thing left to do here though, that I need the input of the board, is what do we want to do for a fee on this? So previously...
A fee?
Yes.
Okay.
So previously, the one day is $75 per day, so we could just, we could do the same thing, we could make it a flat fee, whatever, whatever we want to do there.
How many days do they generally apply for?
Three, isn't it?
Three?
No, I think last year it was like 10 days.
Oh, wow, really?
So the question, all right, so the question at this point, as far as the fee goes, was this last, was this carnival the only one? Because was there, because there are some... All right, so, all right, let me rephrase that.
Pull yourself together.
No, no, it's, sometimes I think on the go hurts. There are, there are organizations in town that hold events that are deemed festivals. So the question is, how is a carnival license defined versus a one day for a festival?
We want, what we would like to do is to take the one days and really make them one days. We had been kind of using them for multi-day events. This, this is called carnival, this thing that I built, but we could use it for any festival-type event or anything like that.
So, but the question is now, whereas the festival is, where a festival generally does fundraising for the organization or for a specific person or a specific cause, carnival, even though they say portions go here and there, it's still a profit-making venture.
Yeah.
So the question that I have is, is how do we, if we have, if we have a fee based upon a per day, per, you know, per diem for the event, how for a carnival do we charge the same amount for a festival, which I don't really want to see?
But, so if we have a one-day event, which is the other form, if this becomes the form for multi-day events, then we could have a fee for nonprofits and a fee for for-profits. Because I'm thinking of the festivals, I'm thinking, for example...
Stackhouse?
Stackhouse. That's typically a nonprofit.
It is, yes.
So that would be a fee. I'm thinking of out on Horse Neck Road, the...
The Holy Ghost.
The Holy Ghost, that's a nonprofit.
It's his, yes, I'm sorry.
That's a multi, they'll have a multi-day event when they have the...
They have their Holy Ghost, their Holy Ghost.
Oh, he does it every day, a license?
Yeah. So the question is, is that, do we get, I mean, how, how much in the, how much detail do we get into, you know, with a carnival versus a festival type of thing?
Well, what Sean was just saying is even though it's a multi-day event, they've been doing a single day.
Right.
So do we want them to do, instead of doing single days for three days in a row?
About a flat fee.
Make it a multi-day?
Right, because I mean, let's put it this way, I mean, if we do a single day and they do it for three days, the town gets $225, you know, versus 10 days, we get $750. Now, the question is, if we do three-day festivals, do we say, okay, it's $200? You know, a five-day festival is $400.
What do we charge now?
$75 a day.
I would be in favor of keeping that and then if we want to decide, you know, this is a nonprofit situation, the board could always review, like the fee could get waived pending a review by the board.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think, I don't have a problem keeping the fee for a festival at 75 and then waiving on the nonprofit. For the carnival though, I do want to see an increase.
Yeah.
To at least a buck and a quarter.
Dollar 25?
Per day.
Yeah. You know, I think $125 a day, because there is...
No cost to the town.
Well, technically, no, there isn't, but...
But when you look up what they're going, so health department's going to review it.
Right.
Fire department, safety, police sign-off, I mean, I think, when I think of that carnival, I'm thinking they need to have police details.
Plus now we have the added cost of the abutters list.
Right.
So...
And we have...
That in itself justifies, I mean, you know, a buck and a quarter for, you know, for a single-day license and if you want to go multiple, you know, so multiple for a five-day license, you know, 500.
And if you're a, but if you're a four-day, if you're a for-profit company, it is what it is.
Right, right. I mean, you can almost give them a bargain on multiple...
If they look at the fee and say, I'm going to make it eight days instead of 10?
You can almost give them a, you know, a little bit of a break on a multiple license, you know, like a five-day. Okay, five-day at 125 gets them 625. Okay, 550 or 500, you know, 10 days on a 125 instead of 1250, $1,000. I think that more than enough covers, you know, covers the town's costs.
Yeah, but it could be seven-day, eight-day, six-day, I mean, it's a little complex.
All right, so if, so if you make an establishment five days and they want it seven, then it's five days plus 125 and 125.
As far as the abutters list too, if we run that like we do with any other abutters list, they pay for that, so...
Could you just clarify one thing while we're on that?
Yeah.
This license will include the ability for all abutters to come before the approval?
Yeah, they'll, so, once the, a hearing date will be set and an advertisement will have to go out and they'll all be notified of when the hearing's going to be and they can come and...
Does this satisfy what people asked for last time? Okay? Because they were pretty clear they want to have a say.
Yes.
Okay. And then there'll be enough time? They may have to come back again because they may, the festival people may have to come back and have a new proposal based on what the abutters say, so we have to come back another time?
That's a much longer process.
And there's two items there, so Chad has a, you know, he wants to talk about some timelines as well after we establish the fees.
So that...
So we've, in your mind, we've taken care of the abutters' concerns, that they're going to, voice is going to be...
They'll be notified, yes, and we'll be able to speak.
All right.
Yeah, so my other item was, as Sean alluded to, I'd like to set some kind of due dates on this thing. So previously, even before we had issues with the neighbors, the owner of the company, the Fiesta Show's, he comes in usually plenty of time, months ahead of time to apply for this, which is great, but then he disappears. So in the meantime, you know, health department, police, fire, they're asking questions and they're not getting answers and then he comes in a week before the event and says, I'll take my permit now. So I'd like to try to eliminate that if we could, like, say like, hey, if this thing isn't done by, you know...
Time frame, sure.
It has to be, this license has to be approved 120 days before the event.
What did you propose, Chad?
Well, so, usually come, so like, like last year, the event was in April, he came in in February and applied for the permit, which is great, plenty of time. Like realistically, it only takes, you know, maybe a month to get through this workflow.
Yeah, but you're still, now you're having the hearing involved.
Right.
60 days.
But, well...
He's got to, you have to give, you have to give us the time.
Right.
So that we can get the abutters' notification out and hold a hearing before the license. The license technically should be at least two weeks, if not a month, approved.
I'm going to say a month, Sean, because if we have the hearing and something comes up that needs to be addressed, we need to have it at the subsequent meeting, there's two more months, there's two more weeks.
So now, let's say we have an event for May 1st.
Okay.
Now you have to have a hearing, you have to have this board approve it by April 1st. Now you have to have a hearing by May 15th. Now you have to have the abutters, you have to have the abutters notified by March 1st and then you have to have the application. So I'm not far off from the 120 days.
I hate to say it, I don't think you are.
No, it's 90, let's go 90 days.
And it's our first, it's our first time.
I think 90 days is fair.
If we find out that the timeline is too long or too condensed?
Can always shorten it.
We can always change it next year.
But I think, I think 90 days prior to the event, the application, the event cannot be held, 90, cannot be held any time before, 90 days after the initial date of the application. Either way, you know, if somebody applies it on February 1st, they can have it on March 1st.
Yeah.
They can't have it in April.
People don't have these things.
Yeah, it's a chance to make money anytime during the month, they'll do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chad, translate for us, what do you want to do?
So yeah, I, like, like how you said, you know, we can set a time and see how, we'll see how it works.
You can always change it.
Right. I, I just want, like, I just want their, more cooperation from them, like, you know, just to get their, in their minds like...
Chad, if they don't cooperate, they don't get the license, they don't run, they don't have the program.
So Chad, when they come in early and you make sure, you tell them, don't disappear. We need a telephone number, email, and we need to make sure that there are questions you need to answer, otherwise we don't want...
Yeah, right. We've had that conversation the past couple of years and last year.
Jeopardize their opportunity to come here.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the application as presented with the stipulation that the application must be submitted to the town 90 days in advance of the date of the actual event.
A minimum of 90 days.
Minimum 90 days and that the per diem cost for the license is $125. With that, for licenses for events of extended beyond a single day, for five-day events, for five-day events, that the license be $500, and for 10 days, it would be $1,000.
I, I just wonder, oh, you're making a motion, so-
It's a motion.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Discussion? I, I just wonder if there's real need to discount, because you're talking, not talking about a lot of dollars, and why make it complicated? Have to give them, is there really incentive for them? They're going to come in here with-
Yeah, it is.
No, but they're going to come in here-
It's saving some money.
How much? No, but they're coming in here with a-
They're saving $125 on a five-day license, and they're saving $250 on a 10-day license.
They also are coming in here knowing they got to come in on Saturday, they're leaving on next Sunday, because they got to go to the next one.
That doesn't bother me.
No, but they have a schedule.
I don't care about their setup.
No, but there's, there's no incentive for them to get a discount, because the schedule is what it is, so just take the 125.
Oh, so you're saying just charge 125?
Yeah, I mean, this, this, this schedule is not going to be predicated on a saving $125. Because they got to go here and there and they jump to the next place.
Their decision to, their decision to hold a five-day event versus a 10-day event versus a three-day event.
Chad, what do you say?
I don't know.
All right, so, all right.
Chad knows he's not paying it.
Can we simplify this?
My, my motion is just at the $125 per diem, period. Leave it at that.
Right.
And then we can look at it later on.
Right, absolutely. Don't complicate it.
Second Sean's motion.
Says the guy who used to have a business.
If, if there was an incentive that made sense, it wasn't as simple, I'd say, but-
Well, I mean, I, let's put it this way, I'm not going to offer, you know, I'm not going to offer them, like, you know, 50 cents on the dollar on the license for an incentive.
No, but this, this schedule is set for the summer already, I mean, they're, they're coming and going, they're not-
Not necessarily, you'd be surprised.
They have to go from one town to the next.
Seconded the motion.
Wow, this is a long time. I hope we don't work on the, on the budget this long.
Well, because I happen, because I do have a question on the diagram event setup, so-
Which, by the way, I just wanted to just clarify.
Yes.
This is a board decision on this license. This is not-
Oh, Sean.
This is not a common vic, so this is a board decision, it'll always be a board decision. Okay.
You don't want to take this one on your own?
No.
Okay. We're going to put your home address on the application. Do we need, is your comment relative to the vote, or you want to vote first?
No, we need to vote, vote first.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the motion? Are we good? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I hear none. That passes, thank you, Chad. Mr. Brooks.
My question on the diagram of event setup, that will determine who the abutters are.
Yeah, so-
So with that, the, the festival that gave us, carnival which gave us so much angst last year, had changed where they typically had set up from previous years. So, we, there were abutters because they chose to put it in the back of their-
Yep.
If they choose now to put it in a different location, that would change the abutters. What is the official definition of abutters? How many feet, miles, what are you, what are we looking at?
That's a good question. I don't know that we've actually set a, a measure for that, because this isn't, this isn't-
I would use the ZBA guidelines.
Okay, so it's either 300 or-
So it's consistency.
Yeah, so it's either-
What have we done in the past?
I think it should be ZBA guidelines, so it's consistency no matter what.
Yeah, so it's, it's, in that case, it's either 300 or 500 feet.
Usually three or 500 feet.
From the parcel. So, from the parcel.
So the mall, that's the whole, it doesn't matter where it's set up.
The proposed, the proposed site, actually.
But that's good to know, because then it gives them an opportunity to air that.
So, in the, so the language should include, so the, 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 the con people know that it's, it's based on the town adopt the ZBA guidelines. So they know we're consistent with every application. It's a good point. Thank you, Heidi.
You're welcome.
Any other thing to add to the application?
No.
Are you, are we going to have to look at this again once it's done, or?
Nope.
It's good. This is a big deal for us.
We'll just look at it after we've, after we've done this carnival, to see if we want to change any of the- But I want to thank you for actually taking on this project, because it was a headache for everyone last year, so thank you. And perhaps we will avoid that headache.
Please.
Any other questions on the subject? It's a good time to move on on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
These clowns, I'm sorry.
Next, we are going to talk about opera funding project update, especially with the DPW, among others. Mr. Barber is here in the building.
Good evening. Tim Barber, Director of Public Works.
Thanks for waiting, Forester.
Absolutely. So, you know, we have a, a number of projects that have been either awarded, constructed, or are still in the queue with Bristol County. I'll just start. I, I had submitted a list to the board, to the board, and I, I did update the list a little bit. So, the first project, emergency generators at Moja Jr. and Charen Street, pump stations. That is, we're working on the specifications currently, so we had to have electricians come out and, and basically figure out a retrofit for every pump station, for sizing for the generators, so. We're almost complete with that, so we can put together a specification, and once that's complete, we can advertise the project and procure it. And then, once it's, once it's procured, we can submit it to the county. Next one, purchase an installation of two biofilter blowers and VFDs. This project originally was 75,000. We had to purchase, in the interim, we had a breakdown, so we had to purchase a new blower, so it took about 20, 25 or so thousand off, or about 20,000 off. So, we put a specification together, and we submitted this project to the county, and it's currently at phase one, which is the auditing phase. We submitted it in December, they came back today with some comments or questions, so we're working on responses to get back to them tomorrow. Next one, rebuild belt filter presses for the compost facility at the wastewater treatment facility. This project was awarded, and we, they're working on shipping materials to our facility. They're, they're going to be built on-site, so the, the project should start sometime in March. This next one, switchgear maintenance, that project was awarded and constructed, it is complete. Sewer Department Operational Study. So this project, it says reallocate, was targeted for opera funds. But in order to use opera funds, they're federally funded grants, and you have to meet federal procurement regulations. Rather than typically, when we, when we work with design, we use Chapter 30B state, state procurement. So, we have, we're, we're underway with the rate study and the operational study. So, we didn't, we didn't go out for federal procurement, you have to go out for a request for proposals. So because we didn't do that, we, we moved forward without this funding, so we'd like to reallocate some of that funding towards another project. The next project, inflow and infiltration, similar. So, when we work on inflow and infiltration projects, the first is, is the study, and then there's a, a recommendation and design for remediation. So, the, this is, we're in the study phase, we're working on an II study. We would have had to request proposals for that, we've been, we're working with a company that we worked with in the past. And then, once we get to a remediation phase, then we would bid that project, but we'd probably be too late for Bristol County funding. Next one, SCADA improvements and controls upgrade, that's at the water treatment facility. That project was awarded and is, is probably about 75% constructed. Next project, the 579 water treatment facility upgrades. So that was a $3.5 million project, but the design was built into that. We did submit to the county, it was about 300,000 for the design. Answered a lot of questions, a lot of back and forth with the county. We've been using this company way back since we, we had tri-halomethane issues to halicetic acid issues in town with the chloramine conversion on a facility, and, and the full evaluation of our water system, and, and the recommendations for projects, for upgrades. So we're also using them to design the upgrades, which, again, we didn't go out for a, a request for proposals. Even though we used our history with this company, they, the county is still reluctant to approve this project. The, the rest of that is, would be the construction phase. So, I've gone ahead and, and we used some emergency funding to expedite the first phase of the design, and we're, we're hoping we can get to a point that we can estimate the construction project, or at least the materials needed for the construction, and we can submit for that part of the project. Call that like a partial procurement, I guess. The next project, the comprehensive sludge handling compost evaluation. So, this was originally proposed as a project, and since then, we've moved to a larger project, evaluating, evaluating the entire wastewater treatment facility and collection system. So we're working on a scope for that with the, with the company now, so this, this project, we'd like to reallocate. Emergency generators at four pump stations, we're currently working on specifications similar to the, the first project. Once we get the specifications complete, we can advertise that for procurement. Another II remediation, we'd like to reallocate those funds as well. And then the UV bulb replacement, which is the ultraviolet system at the wastewater treatment facility. This project has been submitted, it's currently in phase one. Last week, the county submitted some questions and requested some more information. We got them all that information last week, so hopefully we can have an update in this, this phasing to the next level-two review.
So, excuse me, I have a question about those UV lights. So, are they batteries of lights, or plain, the size, or?
So the, the UV-
How it works, I, I just-
Yeah, so the UV bulbs are individual bulbs that go into racks, yeah.
We use them in the heating systems.
Yeah, so, so what happens is, so, so the bulbs have a lifetime, and, and they're beyond their, their expectation, or they're expired from warranty from the, from the company. So, a lot of, a lot of them tend to go out, so you, I think you, you get like a 15,000-hour life out of them, and a lot of our bulbs have about 25,000 hours on them. So, when a bulb goes out, we, we try, we purchase a number of bulbs and replace them, and then, you know, have more bulbs go out. And if we have a problem with the UV system, currently, everything's electronic and on SCADA, so if we call the company to come down for, to troubleshoot, if they open the, the electronic system and they look at our map of bulbs, and there's a bulb out, they say, we can't come down because you have a bulb out. You need to replace that bulb before we come down to your site. And then you replace that bulb, and an hour later, another bulb goes out. So, so we're looking to replace a bulk of the bulbs, so we can get them all back down to zero hours and, and operate more efficiently.
So would it be advantageous for us to have spares?
Yes, yeah, there's 768 bulbs that we use in the whole system.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Brooks.
Just wanted to say, on my tour of the sewer treatment plant, the other issue with these bulbs is they're a single-source procurement.
Correct.
There is not, and you're trying to buy them, lack of a better word, on the black market, trying to buy them from other municipalities that are changing systems, so you can get them at a-
Correct, yes.
Because they're, they're holding you hostage to whatever price they're asking for.
Yeah, because they have a, a trademark, they, they won't allow any aftermarket companies to produce their bulbs and retail them and sell them. So if we can, you know, get them from communities that are-
We can buy, if we can buy the same bulbs from a legitimate bulb company-
Yeah.
Could we do that?
Yeah.
Would they accept that?
Well, then that, that, then SCADA won't look at our system.
The company won't, actually, the company, the manufacturing company of our system sued all the aftermarket retailers, so, and, and manufacturers, so they can't even produce these bulbs anymore outside of the manufacturing company. So, the price is really, really steep, it's got a heavy increase, especially since COVID. But to buy a bulk of them, you get, you get a, a little discount, so, so it does help to buy, buy a large amount of these bulbs and the ballasts that go with them.
Of course, yeah.
So when you're looking at the, um, the study, the operational study, to go away from that system of UV lights?
Yeah.
What is a new system, what we're going to be finding out, is what a new system would take to replace the current UV system?
A new UV system? Well, that, that UV system replaced an older UV system as well, so it's not that old, so we're not looking to get away from that system. We're just looking to replace all the bulbs in the system. You know, and that UV system replaced, replaced a lot of chemical treatment that we were required to do, you know, to treat the bacteria, where UV does that without releasing chemicals, you know, into the, the effluent.
In another organization I've been working with, I'm very involved with county government as well, in trying to procure these opera funds, and it, at best, it's nearly impossible.
It is, it's tough.
In the words of many, it's, you wonder why the county is even involved in distributing opera funds, because they don't have the wherewithal and the system intact with the experts to get it done, but that's the way that is. My understanding here, when you say reallocate, it means that we are, we won't be able to benefit from the county funds, and therefore we put it into town funds to reallocate, to pay for it that way? Is that what that means, or am I confused?
So I'm looking at reallocating a number of these projects to other projects. You know, so, so I took, I-
Other projects that could qualify for the county?
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
However, these projects still need to happen.
Correct.
And therefore, they need to be paid for out of-
Capital.
Capital, okay.
So the, the idea is that the county is going to give us X amount of millions?
Yes.
And whether we spend it on X or on Y, you're going to spend it. But what's it going to take to get that done, in terms of, I know we have a deadlines to meet?
Correct.
And, and do we have the wherewithal and the personnel to help you get that done, or is it going to be a pretty difficult task, in your view?
We do. We're, hopefully, we can get, we have multiple personnel working on these projects, and like I said, with that, that 579 water treatment plant upgrade, they're trying to expedite their design, so we can get, so we can use some of this funds. And, you know, we, we may have to look at other projects.
And some of these have federal guidelines, which you'll have to follow?
They all do, so, so, yeah, yeah.
And that, that requires a different strategy than we, maybe we're used to, but-
Correct.
It's, it's going to require some resources and people to get that done, because we're on a real deadline.
Absolutely.
And when you said the RFP process for, for opera funding, and, and these were not, are they requiring three bids?
They, three proposals for any design work. So, for any design work, they require proposals to be evaluated. Where, you know, any, any construction work or purchasing is, you know, it's based on the level of the purchase, and whether it has to be advertised for bid, or if you can solely go out with three quotes. And they do have sole source as well, but their sole source federally is maxed out at 250,000, where, you know, 30B sole source is maxed out at 50,000.
So I was going to say, I mean, it's a sole source for that bulb replacement.
It is a sole source, but because of the cost is exceeded their, their limit for sole source, we still have to advertisement, even though we, we would only get one bid. But we actually got two bids. So we got the manufacturer, and then a reseller that would purchase them from the same manufacturer and resell them, which, it was about another 25% above the manufacturing price.
So, if you're looking for now, looking at other projects, our timeline to get this funding, right, isn't it, we have to have it set by December?
They have June.
The county wants it in June? By June.
Apply for it by June.
So that doesn't give us enough time to do anything that needs an RFP, that gets three bids.
Right, so we're, we're looking at construction projects and purchasing, rather than going out for design RFPs.
I think that the key here is that, that this is a major task, a lot of money, and it's a one-time.
It is.
I think the support of the DPW and the support of this board has to be a team effort to make sure we get this done.
It absolutely does.
And looking back, and we don't take advantage of it, it'd be, it'd be a crime.
Yes.
But a lot of work to be done. And I think the support of this board, knowing what has to be done, is what I think that this hearing was about more than anything else. Any comments from anybody? Anything else, Tim, on this?
No. No, thank you.
One item on, on Tim's table here, he's, says, he's, wants to reallocate some of the funding and put that towards the bulb replacement. So previously, the board had not voted for the bulb replacement. So the board would have to make a vote to reallocate the funding, as Tim's proposed here, towards the bulb replacement for the use of the ARPA funds.
So moved.
We need to vote just on the bulb replacement issue?
To reallocate the funding he's shown here for these items.
What about the others on the-
He says reallocate. So he wants to, when he says reallocate, he wants to take this money and put it towards the bulbs.
I have one other question. If you had a building that had a heat issue, has that been resolved? And does heat, the heat system, is that a possibility for ARPA funding?
We didn't go for ARPA funding. It was kind of an emergency project when the heater blew apart. But, but we did get some, we did use some, some older articles that had funding for the garage project.
Okay.
For the highway garage project. So we were able to fund that project.
So you have heat?
So they're working on the project currently. So we're, we're still using temporary heat.
Okay.
And the, all the heaters are in. I think all the piping's complete. They're working on the electrical. So once the electrical is complete, I think they'd be pretty close.
Okay.
So the theory here is, is more than enough projects and money to be spent that we can swap these dollars and put them into other projects that have a shorter timeline to get it done?
Yes, sir.
Spend that money.
Yes.
Okay. So we need to vote? We have a motion?
On the reallocation, yes. Yes.
And a second.
We do. Oh, excuse me. Okay. Any comments on that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. It's unanimous on that. Anything else, Tim?
That is it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Tim.
You're welcome.
I do have one, one thing. No, not for Mr. Barber. On the pickleball courts. I received a message from a user saying that he had some issues with how close the court is to the fence. That I guess, at some point in time, if you're reaching back with the paddle while you're on the baseline, you're hitting the fence. So I'm wondering if we've received any further complaints from users? Or if there's somebody out there who is a pickleball connoisseur or expert to say whether or not the-
I'm certainly not a pickleball, but you should be playing closer to the kitchen, which is well into the court. So-
I understand that. But I mean, I guess to start off-
Which court are we talking about?
The new, the new ones over on Crepo.
Crepo. Well, I know we had to expand that court.
Right. So the court, yeah, the question is, is whether or not-
Has it been after that expansion?
I, this was, yeah, I believe it might have been.
We can, well, a few things. So the, the goal with the courts was to match the existing footprint that was there with the basketball courts. So, but also Tim Larracaster, we can bring him in, he can speak to it. He knows the guidelines, the official rules and measurements for pickleball, and they, I think, I'm pretty sure they meet the official rules.
We don't need to bring him in. I just wanted to make sure that that was a concern.
We haven't really heard-
From one individual. So I, I just, I just want to, you know, somebody spoke up. I just want to make sure that-
I know, I could recommend, one person we can ask, they'll give us the absolute opinion.
I would say if that fence, if that fence is in the diagram-
No, 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 no.
Then Tim, Tim must made sure that it was part of the-
I just, I just want to make sure. That's all.
We all set with that? Okay, we'll move on to the next.
Can we go back to page 23 in our handouts, which was talking also about ARPA funding? What was the Green Communities grant?
So, well, I'll go through these.
I just, I just didn't know what the, this acronym was.
It's a matching. It's a school for green energy. The, the school had a grant, I can't remember the details on the exact project, but it was one of our Green Communities projects that we had a match for, which was the 23,949. But also, these items on this list are funded, ARPA funding through revenue replacement. So these don't have the same criteria, the deadlines that the ARPA funding for the DPW projects has. So this money is just ready to be expended. And a lot of it has the pickleball courts, the purchase of the property at Russell's Mills Road, the town website and the, the grant. And now we're moving forward with the rec center design.
The high school tennis court, these are all-
I'll find out from Tim and Jim Kylie about what the status is of the high school tennis court.
What do we have besides that? Are there any others to be concerned about?
No. I mean, you, as you heard, you mentioned in other presentations, the majority of the funding has gone towards DPW to kind of offset the costs for the user rates. So.
Okay. So you'll get back to us on that next meeting, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Time to move on. Next. Rogers Street, Russell Mills Road, no parking sign updates.
Oh.
I'm back. Tim Barber, Director of Public Works.
As a past conversation-
I didn't run out quick.
I wanted to run out of here as fast as I could have.
So just an update on the, the signage that, you know, the select board had directed DPW to install based on the memo from Traffic Safety Officer back in 2013. Those signs were all installed based on the wording that was proposed. And based on that wording, you know, the signs were installed close together to, to prevent anyone from parking, you know, between signs. And there were a lot of signs. And the complaints were that it's kind of, it's sign pollution. And, and then another complaint was, I guess, snow removal on the sidewalk portion with all the signs. So I met with Safety Officer Canario. We looked at the signs and we're, we're looking at rewording the signs to say no parking between signs, add some arrows on the signs. And I think we can remove about five signs on Rogers Street and two signs from Potter Street at minimal.
Great.
I think it'll look a lot better.
That's been a bone of contention for years.
I mean, I, I understand, I understand making sure that we got, you know-
Every square inch.
To do. But then all of a sudden, when I saw the signs, I'm saying, oh, man, this is the, this is the three stop signs at Chase Road or Westport Road, ending up with a street light, you know, thing, you know? We go from one little request and all of a sudden, we just, yeah, it's just a lot.
I asked them to be respectful when they installed the signs, but they, they just tried to stick within-
Right. They were told to do what they were supposed to do. And it just, I think it was just a little bit of an overkill.
And with the signs that are there, you know, and with the curb cuts are there, we gotta work between the curb cuts. I think we can, we can remove at least seven signs.
So when will that happen?
Now that I brought it to, to the select board, it'll, I'll put the project out on a work order immediately.
Great.
So in 2013, was that still King Lumber Plaza? And now it's completely-
Yes.
Different now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that was, that was as part of this project. Our recommendation from the Traffic Safety Order then, Officer then. And it never made it to the, their, to their permit. It was never recorded in the ZBA decision.
Ah.
So it was never completed. And so years later, there were some complaints from residents about parking. Even some of our vehicles, solid waste and recycling vehicles, had a hard time turning down some of these streets with cars parked on both sides.
Yep.
So.
Long time- Say that Officer Canario took what was there, talked, looked the place over, and now we've improved the situation by moving these signs and changing them?
Correct.
Great.
Based on his expertise?
Yes.
Okay.
Glad to hear that.
Do we need to vote on this, or?
You should, you should vote on it because you voted to have the signs installed.
Motion to have these excess signs removed.
Well, also, the language changed.
And the language changed.
Second half.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? I hear none?
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Have a good night.
Next, Long Term Capital Planning Committee update.
Do you want to give that update?
I'm sorry, I thought it was going to be something else.
This is simply, we, we meet on a monthly, we meet on a monthly basis. And the last time the general public heard about this long-range plan was a joint meeting, which we ended up, the school committee was able to allocate funds, excess funds, and avoid a, an override for this, for the upcoming year. The override issue came up as a result of the school committee budget shortfall at the time, and also the Long Range Planning Committee couldn't really take on long-range planning and spending if we had short-term issues as well regarding schools and other departments. We are meeting on a regular basis, and the plan at this point in time is the second meeting in February, a select board meeting, February 25th, whatever that date is. We are planning to make a, a, an initial presentation on what we've been working on. We're talking about major funding of major projects over the next 30-plus years to include not only things like schools and bridges, but also DPW projects regarding sewer treatment, et cetera, user fees, et cetera. Cause the belief in this committee is that whether you're spending it on user fees for water and sewer, or an additional tax burden for whatever that comes along, people want to know what's it going to cost, and what they're going to get out of it, and what's the plan. And our idea is to look at these in total and continue to keep this out in front of everyone, to be an open and project that people know what's going on and getting input. We plan to even have open meetings where we can get people's input on this regard. So we felt, as a committee, we met last week, that because the override came along, came and went for now, for this year, that it was worth mentioning something today to give an update. And I, I also certainly welcome any questions or comments.
So my, my only question and comment is hearing tonight from Tim Barber about the issues at DPW and looking at design and, and changes that they need, and looking at the millions of dollars that we're putting towards, through ARPA funding and other funding, through what DPW needs. And I know your long-term planning group is looking at what the needs of DPW, but I also think we need to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we dodged a bullet this year in looking at the school department's budget. But when we looked at the school department's budget, they're using funds that they have, which will not, they will not have next year. So there's a problem for the school department. I see a problem for DPW. We will have exhausted all ARPA funding, and they still have needs. And I, I want us to look at all our departments. And so my question with long-term planning, are you talking to all the departments or just some departments? Cause I still think, like, we met, we had the joint meeting with school committee, but we haven't met with DPW like that, or the police department, or-
I think-
I mean, those are the big three departments.
That is part of the plan. And certainly DPW came up because we looked at all the long-term projects, and they came from schools and they came from DPW. And we need to keep going. But, you know, there isn't a long-term project for the police department right now. But, but in terms of, you know, should we be looking at their budget and talking to them? I think we should. But the, the original plan was to look at these long-term projects. And we've identified all those projects, and we're also going to rank them. And certainly, if it includes other departments for the short term that we haven't included, we'll bring them in as well. But are you asking, should we be looking at the long-term needs of the largest departments like police, like DPW? Yes, I think that 100% agree with you. And our plan will bring that in.
Because we're hearing tonight about the, you know, the sewer treatment plant and, and these stations that, that they needed to have the generators for, or emergency generators for these pump, pump stations. Any of these things that go will cause a huge headache, which we want to avoid. But I also know as far as DPW, because it's not just, it's water and sewer and the highway department, which also comes under the DPW, the roads and road maintenance and-
Water quality.
And water quality. I mean, there's a lot of issues. And some have got to, we've got to look at a long-term lens, but there may need to be things that we need to move on in the short term. You're welcome.
Any other questions on that we got? Okay. Thank you. Next would be Mass Trails Grant Public Land Work Permission Form.
Good evening. Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. So in your packet, you have a memo from me, as well as the Public Landowner Permission Form. So the town of Dartmouth, we're looking at submitting an application through Mass Trails to support the design and permitting for a walking trail at Cornell Pond. Over the last several years, you know, we've had the Cornell Pond Advisory Committee, who has really, you know, taken upon themselves to do a lot of improvements. This is one of their long-term visions that they want to see, connecting the existing parking area at Cornell Pond to the existing trail network at the adjacent property with DNRT. Obviously, there's some special considerations that we need to look at over there when it comes to spillways, when it comes to accessibility. And so what this would do, would be to fund a engineer to come in and really take a look at all of that and put it together as one comprehensive proposal. So, you know, I was able to connect with them at our MMA conference this weekend. It is an aggressive application timeline, but I'm pretty confident we can get the application in before the February 1st deadline. So tonight, what I'd be asking is authorization from the select board to have Sean sign on behalf of the town, this approval that they need for the grant.
That's good.
This, this, obviously, the Cornell, Cornell Pond Advisor Committee with Gloria Bancroft, her groups, who's deeply involved in this process?
Yeah. So met with them here in the fall. Their committee submitted a letter of support for this application. And really, any efforts that we do over there to bring improvements and enhance it there and-
It's a strong group. They know what they're doing over there.
Yes. Very passionate.
And they're vocal too, yeah.
Have Mr. McGinnis sign it? Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Thank you, Chris, much. Okay. Next, the Environmental Affairs Coordinator contract. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes. In your packet is the new three-year contract for the current Environmental Affairs Coordinator, Mark Garrett. This contract goes from 23 October to October of 2026.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that gladly.
Do we have any comments or questions on this proposal? Anybody? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Contract motion is approved. Thank you. Are we ready for the town administrator update?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Mr. McGinnis?
So per the select board's last meeting, Chris Vitale and I are working on getting quotes for appraisals for the old police station site. The board had asked for appraisals of the property, a few different appraisals to present at a future meeting, and also to work with a representative from the Historic Commission. We have not heard from the Historic Commission about who their representative is going to be, but Chris is pulling together a proposal for the appraisals anyway. Oh, well, as we move along. Next up, Community Compact Grant Award. We received an $8,000 Community Compact Grant for a records management project for the clerk's office. This is great. Chris Vitale worked with the, Sarah, the town clerk, to help to get this awarded. Just some facts, the Veterans Service Officer had provided some information recently. They, last year in 2023, they provided $873,000 in benefits for Dartmouth veterans. So he does, Matt does a great job and quite a bit of work, but he's really working as an advocate for the veterans. Currently, there's 44 veterans, spouses and widows in Dartmouth. We received some news about our health insurance, proposed increases for FY25 for MIA over the weekend. They anticipate increases to health insurance of anywhere between 2.2 and 9, almost 10%. They, they estimate it's going to average about 6%. That's good news. They had informed us they are expecting a 10% increase overall. So if the average is 6.6%, we'll be happy. But we don't know for another few weeks what our actual increase will be for next year. Tomorrow, we have staff customer service training. We have two sessions. It's right, as of today, we have 83 staff signed up for the customer service training, which is really encouraging that they're all going to be there. And there's only 10 that were unable to attend due to other commitments that they were- And there's only 10 that were unable to attend due to other commitments that they won't be in the office for. And lastly, you may have heard, Governor Haley has proposed a Municipal Empowerment Act Monday. So there's some nice things in this legislature that'll be beneficial, or could be beneficial to the town of Dartmouth. One is it reforms our procurement rules, allow for easier procurement on a number of items. It's also updating borrowing rules for school projects, which generally borrowing schedules are 30 years. This will move them out to 40 years to be more in line with the life of the building. That will be helpful for the town to pay for some of these projects. Also, they are giving towns the options to increase the motor vehicle excise, rooms, and mails tax. This could be a revenue benefit to communities. And also, they're looking at creation of Regional Board of Assessors. So as we know, all municipalities are having issues with recruitment and retention, assessing positions in particular. So this would be part of that legislature, but it would be clearly, you know, a year or two away from anything ever happening. But that's my update.
Any comments on that? Okay. Old business.
Bliss Corner, no new updates. The same with Lake Nokochoke. Municipal broadband is moving along, as you heard in the last meeting, and Mass DB-T5, no new updates.
I have an addition, old business issue, that I actually meant to bring up at our last meeting regarding the old police station. We are now waiting to put together a committee. We are looking to hopefully end up with a warrant article at the town meeting. In the meantime, we've had a couple of requests for activity in the building. The ones I know of from the Historical Commission, going in and doing a, whatever they want to do. And I didn't feel getting those requests, that it was certainly something I didn't want to make a personal decision on myself, and I thought it would be prudent to bring it up here in terms of what, how much and if, activity we want to allow while we are preparing for the warrant for town meeting. So...
The Historic Commission wanted to...
What are they, what are they, what are they going to gather? What kind of information do they think they want?
They want to do studies on, on...
Mold and mildew?
Various...
Yeah, I think they have talked about it in front of us, that they wanted to look at options.
Yeah, and they want to go in and have people look at it, and they come up with a, with a, whatever it might be, whatever, some kind of, you know, proposal, or... And knowing, I, I got this request after our meeting last week regarding they want to go in and, I remember specifically this particular one, but there's been more than one. And it, all it means is they want to go in the building, have permission, and do whatever they want to do, and come out. The question really is not why they want to do it, but the question is, do we want activity in the building in the meantime?
All along, we've not allowed anybody in there. We've had the police that wanted to use it at some point, we did not allow that anymore for safety reasons. I don't think anybody should be going in that building.
I mean, is there any...
Unless we, unless we, we actually authorize it.
Is there anything productive that can be actually done between now and what we're trying to do here, by anybody, to, to help the process along?
Well, I think if we say no to them, then it, then we are...
So let them sign a waiver that the town is not responsible for any health issues, period.
Well, I don't think that's the issue. The issue is, do we want activity in the building, period? Does it serve a purpose to have activity?
Doesn't seem to me to.
Right, to me, if, if we don't allow them to go in, then we're hindering them to gather whatever the information is that they want to gather...
Smoke and mirrors, nothing.
To, to answer their questions about the possibility of its, of its use.
I for one wouldn't allow anybody in there.
And, I mean, you, David, at our last meeting, said that you would want someone to look at it, to give us an idea of what we could sell it for. So I'd say we want somebody to look at it.
Yep. Well, that process, I don't know what the process is going to be to get a town warrant article done, but I'm sure that part of that's going to mean we're going to have to go in the building and do something.
That's what I think. Somebody's going to have to do it, who does...
Agreed. And I'm, I'm, I, my, my sense from them, and I had a conversation on the phone, was they want to go in and study this or that, because they think that it'll add to the value of trying to do with the building, and it'll enhance their, their ability to try to convince us to save the building, which is fine. But they want to go in and do that. So the question is, do we want activity in the building for those purposes?
Well, I think not only do we want activity in the building, but we have a reason to want information.
We do.
So...
That will come up.
Whether it's them or it's us, I, I think we have to look at, if we want to move to see if we, we want to sell it, then we want to look at, you know, having someone go in that would know a municipal building that potentially can be retrofitted, what that would, what that would cost, you know, what that would...
Is there, is there a benefit from, for the, will it be necessary for the Select Board as we construct a, a town warrant article, to have to go in the building and do something between now and town meeting? I would say, yes, we're going to have to do that. Okay, supervised entrance by somebody to go in and look at it. Is there a same benefit for the, whether it be the Historical Commission or anybody else, to go in there and do the same thing between now and then as well, and why are they doing it?
That's the question.
The question is, is who is going to do it, what, who is going to pay for it, and what's going to happen with the results? If it's just somebody on a volunteer basis that's doing it, I don't know about that.
We have a purpose. To, to, to find out what the place, what the building is worth.
That's the purpose of our, of allowing, through the Select Board, allowing a company to go in, to find out the value of the prep, and get...
I mean, there's nothing wrong with more information.
When we get to, so I'm going to jump ahead to, to Select Board updates. This weekend, I attended the MMA conference, and one of the sessions that I sat in on was on housing converts. And I wanted to talk about it at that point. I think we should talk to our Regional Municipal Planning Agency, which for us is SERPEd. There are groups that have converted municipal properties into housing. And what we want to know from somebody that's done this is, does this size and shape of this building work for that kind of a project? And my question is, if it's, they've, this particular one I've sat in did housing converts. And it then converts, they do the work, converts the building into apartments or condominiums, and it gets it, the building back on the tax rolls. So that's a possibility. But what I don't know is, is that site of any value to this? They showed many properties that they've worked on all over Massachusetts, the different groups.
But did they have health issues?
They had a lot of issues, and from the, what they showed us of the condition of the buildings that they took over, absolutely. Because they had mold, they had a building without a roof for years and years and years. I mean, they had all kinds of issues. And what it's transformed. That being said, the number of units that they've transformed them into, some are going to be cost-effective, and they would tell you, if it's only going to be X number of units, it's not cost-effective to do it. I think we need to talk to somebody that can...
Well, let's not lose sight of what we voted on last time. We voted on the ability to find people who are interested, who are experts in this field, who can find government money, and buy the building, and do it and get it done. And if that works, great. If it doesn't, we have the option to say no. I have a, the letter I received, that they, from the Historical Commission, spoken with a structural engineer, who was willing to have a look at 249 Russell Mills Road. I understand that we are pivoting at this point, but I would still appreciate allowing this person access to the building. It may be good to have a proposal for the structural assessment in our pocket, especially since the integrity of the building has been called into question. So she's doing this, they request us this ongoing, you know, study of the building, whether it be structural, or, or diseased, or whatever.
So they just want somebody to go in the building and, and look at the building to come up with a proposal?
That's, that's this one. It may be next week, it may be because they want to look at the roof, and I, I don't know the answer to that. So that's why I don't want to limit it to this one time. The question is, do we want activity? It has to be supervised, and it has to be safe, and do we want activity in there? And we've gone on, now we've gone on this for 10 minutes, and I, but I think we need to have a policy.
I don't have a problem with them going in. As long as they understand, you know, to hold the town harmless.
Well, these are town people who...
Who the structural engineer is, you think that's a town resident?
I do not. But I don't know that...
I don't know.
Maybe, but...
It doesn't make a difference whether they're a town...
Well, we also have to send, they can't go in, they have to be escorted, it'd be a town...
They have to go in.
In this case, it was addressed to Tim Lancaster, who was said, I guess he's accompanied him once before. No, I don't know who it would be, but we'll have to have someone to escort these, on these requests.
You know my view, I don't want anybody in there.
Well, I'll go back to say, I still think whether or not they have someone, we need to pursue on our side if it's got any viability.
One way or another, we have...
And answer that question, yes or no.
But we didn't vote that way last week. We voted to forego any studies, to forego any, any feasibility. We voted for the marketplace to go in there and decide with restrictions on the town, on the town warrant, the warrant article, to go in and, and sell the building.
Okay, David, but if someone's going to go in to see whether or not it's viable, if we want to put it on the market, someone's not going to stand outside and decide. So there's got to be someone to go in.
But we, but we need a warrant article, we need permission to do that from town meeting. Do you foresee our ability, Sean, to do that before town meeting? Is it viable to be able to send in realtors and people, commercial people are going to look at it before we have approval?
Well, I think we're talking two different things. So the appraisal that we're getting done is, is a property appraisal. They'll look at the building, and they'll, I mean, they may not, they may go inside, but they're not going to look around in detail. They just are trying to establish a value of the building, and I think they're going to see inside that, you know, it's not really usable as is.
Okay.
And then they're going to base their appraisal on that. I think what Heidi's talking about is having a, a company come in that does, renovates buildings as part of their business plan for municipalities, and having an analysis done. So there's two different things.
Do you see that being done before town meeting approval?
I would have no idea, but I think the, the, what, the first piece we talked about is having someone, you know, that's where we start. The appraisal has to be done.
Yeah, so it'll take about a month.
Okay, so what I'm looking for direction here in terms of how much activity we want in the building before town meeting, warrant articles established and voted on.
So we don't want to put the cart before the horse, basically what you're talking about.
Well, this, this is a structural engineer, which is, that's the piece that I think we tried to avoid last week by saying, no work, let, let the experts go in and decide what they want to do, and decide whether they want to buy or not. And they're saying, well, let's do a, let's do a concurrent study, so we can be ready when, whenever. I mean, wasn't that the whole purpose, but...
So my notes say that there was going to be talk of a small advisory committee for March 25th to present what they had found out. That's what, one of the things we discussed. March 25th is a Select Board meeting. So I would say that we had to have assumed at that point that somebody was going to walk around the building and look at it to see if, what the viable options were.
That's the appraisal we're getting.
Yeah.
That's, to me, that's a separate issue, that we have to do that in preparation for the town article. They're saying they want to go in and do a, a, a parallel study because they, because they think they're going to, the town's going to develop it and not sell it, and, which to me, we want that kind of activity?
Before you know it, everybody, Tom, Dick, and Harry's going to be in that building.
Well, we, we can't go in without...
Absolutely not.
Do we want to have escorts, and we want to schedule it? Do we want to limit it? You can see where this is going, so...
It'll be a sideshow.
Well, but what if, when you get the, the person that you are getting to, whoever's going to do the market analysis, if we know it's happening on Thursday at 2:00, what would be the harm to say to them Thursday at 2:00 is when the building will be open? And see who they can get to...
25.
So you are, first of all, you're saying if, if, that we should act, we should have, we should allow the Historical Commission to have access to the building, it was just a question of when and how, and maybe through convenience, or, you know, we've already been in the building. Do, do we want to allow the access?
I, I don't want to look like we've been a roadblock. They clearly think we've roadblocked at other points. I don't want to give the appearance of having, being a roadblock.
Okay. Ms. McDonnell?
I, I said I don't have a problem with people getting access. I've said in my piece.
We, we establish a limited access by, by, it has to be accompanied by a, obviously, an appointed town employee?
That's been the practice.
Yes.
And maybe a timeframe of some sort, a legitimate timeframe, if you, if you're going to look into, I don't agree with it, but, but my suggestion would be to have a limited timeframe, to do what they need to do, an hour, not 10 minutes to look around, obviously, they need, so they get an hour to, to do their work.
Can we say we will allow a limited access at the convenience of the town employee, with all safety factors, and limit the, limit the trip to...
Triple masks.
Okay with you, Ms. McDonnell?
It's fine.
I'll go along with that.
Yes, masks.
And Mr. McGinnis will have to administrate that, that project. Okay? Phew. Will you move on from that?
Please.
Last, last year's budget was half that amount of time, I think. Okay, we are moving now to the minutes, I believe. October 30, November 13, and November 27.
Having been corrected, I make the motion to approve. And I will second that.
Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? I hear none. Those minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Comments from our Select Board members? Who wants to begin, anybody?
I have none.
Come on now.
Zero for me.
Mrs. Brooks?
All right, I'll, I'll continue with having attended the MMA conference this weekend. I know in addition to myself, Mr. McGinnis, Chris Vitale, Gary Carrero, and our assessor, Jessica Pacheco, I always want to call her Rachel. Jessica Pacheco also attended, and I'm hoping that our little group will meet and discuss the programs we attended. We attended a variety of them, so we didn't see. I must, myself, as I said, I attended the one on housing converts. I also attended Climate's Impact on Municipal Property Market, and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, yeah, sorry, workshop. All fascinating. It was the first time I'd attended the conference, and unfortunately, I had, because I attended all these sessions, I had no time to go to the trade show, which also looked wonderful. But it was a great experience. We had presentations by Governor Moira Haley, Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, also Senator Ed Markey, and Senator Elizabeth Warren. We also had a fascinating keynote with Gina McCarthy, who worked under the Biden and Obama administration in environmental issues, who hails from the great state of Massachusetts. And one of the things that she said, and I quote, "If anyone is willing to give you money, you take it." So when I hear about the, you know, going for this grant or that grant, she said, "Always use their money first." So I think it was a great experience, so...
Oh, boy.
Just so you know. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is that for those looking to get out of the house during this time, there's been some, the Dartmouth High School sports, if you look it up on their website, they have, the teams are almost getting to the end of their season, and several have qualified for going further in the season, which is great. So there's lots of things happening. The Council on Aging has a full selection of programs that they're doing in the winter, and the library has, so even though it's a, it's a cold time of year, there's lots of stuff happening in town, and people should check it out.
I, I, I just would like to reiterate, because Sean was going to the, we were well-represented at the conference, and I look forward to taking advantage of them, because I, we've, we've watched a lot of their seminars they offer, and I think they're very productive. They, many times... They, many towns share all the things we do, obviously, and it's always good to take advantage of not reinventing the wheel and doing things that people have success with, and I think that's great. You went, I appreciate you going, and look forward to sharing that with you.
As Sean was mentioning about Maya, they did do a presentation, and it's, the work that they do to represent our municipality and other municipalities to get the best health insurance plans for our employees is amazing. And they keep including more and more physicians and units to our plans so that our, our folks have options, so they really work hard.
We are, as a town, committed to improving our health situation. We know how critical it is.
And to the employees, Maya also offers wellness programs, and our town takes part. Our employees take part in those, so it was great.
We can construct something that makes sense, that people can really take advantage of. Anybody else have any other comments? Ms. McDonnell, you have any comment, further comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.